Good afternoon, this is the Athens City Plan Commission. It's a little bit afternoon and it's November 18th, 2009, Wednesday. Regular meeting. We have a quorum with four of the five members attending. Anybody who plans to speak, will you please stand and be sworn in? Do you affirm or swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Great, that works for me. Okay, we have one case, 0911. It says Mike Knoll, 555 East State Street. It's a Title 41 Site Plan Review. I'm going to turn it over to the city planner. We have received some documentation on this. To my knowledge, we haven't gotten all the results back yet, or so. So why don't you, Paul, take it over?
Well, you are correct. We don't have a complete site plan review yet through the Public Works Department. There was a few questions relating to easements and locations of storms, sanitary, et cetera. And so we're working through those issues with Panathinaikou Knoll right now. Probably the best thing to do would be for Panathinaikou Knoll to come up and just talk about their project. We do have a preliminary report from Andy Stone's department. That includes TAP fees.
If you want it.
Many of these issues are being resolved as we speak. Myself, Mr. Paskey, and Andy met with the developers on Monday morning to review the issues and I believe they're in the process of addressing those. You should have a copy of the site plans.
Yes, we did. We got last... Yes, we have full size, I believe, and you gave us compacted ones last meeting, I believe. Also, I think that they've appeared in front of the Tree Commission, I believe. I saw it on the agenda. Okay. Okay, why don't we start and just tell us what's going on? Besides the Dunkin' Donuts and Verizon.
Are they up there?
Right there, of course.
Okay. Originally, that site was planned for a bank to be on it. And the bank was bought out by another bank who had a different philosophy on banking and felt that that particular area was not a good location for their particular bank, which I'm not quite sure if I understood why, because we've done dozens of banks and that's the reason it ended up there to begin with, but we won't go any further on that. We bought it back because we wanted to control the site in front of... Because we had developed the other three sites also and wanted to make sure that it just didn't end up being something that might not fit in for what the original concept was. Unfortunately, the recession hit a month after we bought it and we haven't been able to find anyone interested in the site over the last nine months until now. And Verizon expressed an interest in it. We're working on our lease with them. It looks like they may add full and part-time employees over a seven-day period, about 30 people to their payroll above total. With that, and then we started looking into what else might be an adapted use or what be a good use in that particular area. With that, looking at the Chambers study that they had done in restaurants and stuff and came to the conclusion that maybe Dunkin' Donuts might be a good fit. It's a narrow store. It's only got like six seating. Their biggest use is coffee in the morning with a couple of donuts in. And we figured with all the law enforcement in Athens, that was probably a great mix at that time.
Okay. Let's see if you get caught speaking originally.
Won't be the last. And actually, the reality is of the top 10 fast food franchises that exist in America, the only one Athens doesn't have is a Dunkin' Donuts. So it seemed like a good fit at that point. So that's... We've looked at those options. Dunkin' Donuts are in this week. They're doing a traffic count market study. They'll make the final determination whether or not that site will be accepted by them. Hopefully, I'll have that information by the end of next week then. If not, we'll develop it as an open retail store and look for other uses for it if Dunkin' Donuts feels it's not adequate. But Verizon is 98% sure with it. Then they liked the site. We're fine-tuning their leases with it, so hopefully we'll finish it. Pretty much, it fits on the original footprint of the original bank site. Very little modification, other than they need some additional parking that they asked for. And we modified the parking to be perpendicular parking. We show per... Diagonal Pining Office suggested of maybe looking at a perpendicular parking in lieu of that, which kind of worked out well because it provided another tree that the Tree Commission has asked for with that.
Okay. Is this an updated version of what we have in front of us?
No, it's an updated, updated. This is just hot off the computer there. Basically, it's going on fast.
Okay.
It looks like it's going to serve a very good purpose for doing that. Addressed some of the issues that the planning office had was about the diagonal parking and maybe some issues with people backing out on the double circulation there. And that should help on that. And then it also gives us another tree here.
Okay, so it looks like the building moved a little bit to the west. Is that what I'm seeing?
It moved a little bit to the... Well, the building's the exact same location.
Oh, east, I mean, I'm looking upside down.
Yeah, basically, all ended up doing that.
Changing the lining. Okay. I was looking at this one.
Yeah, so the building's the exact same location, the drive-up for the Dunkin' Donuts, the exact same location. All we did was just kinked it. I don't have 45 degrees on it.
This hash part, is this an island, or what is that exactly?
It's painted.
It's a painted thing. Okay, I was concerned about the dumpster clearance.
No, it was designed out originally because we knew that there would be a need for a dumpster back in there for the bank at that time. And we went ahead and put the footers in already for it because we wanted the asphalt part, surface, everything at the time we did this, three years ago.
Okay. And the actual drive-through would be here?
Yes.
And the actual drive-through over here is here?
It's a double lane there.
And it's staggered?
It's staggered, yes. So they'll come this way, they'll go that way. We will end up having signage here about turn right or turn left, do not enter, because there's been questions about... Some people can't read signs here, so we're going to double the signs here and double them there so they don't try to drive out this way.
So this will be a two-way, you said?
That'll be single this way, going that way, single this way, going that way.
Okay.
Yeah. With a landscape island down the middle.
Raised, I see. Okay.
So that's kind of the nature of it. Finishes of the building will be very similar to what exists with CVS and Applebee's and kind of bring in the neighborhood.
Do you need an elevation?
I was asking about that donut in the...
The sign?
Sign?
Yeah, we talked about that.
Signage and the Dunkin' Donuts signage?
We talked about that, how that was being applied.
We'll eliminate the D-D with that and bring up just speed standard graphics on the side of the building.
Without a double D there?
With a double D on that then. And so that's... Kind of add some artwork at the same time, give them what they want too.
Other questions?
Yeah, I have questions in talking with some residents of the community. I think there's a lot of concern as far as the density that is growing in there as far as your traffic flow. In other words, where you have the drive-through traffic coming out of CVS, you also have the Holiday Inn Express, and then there's also this middle lane where there's... There just seems to be a lot of convergence areas around in here.
Well, I'd say 90% of the traffic leaves at the traffic light here.
Right. But I'm talking about right, actually, in this site here.
I've never noticed that. I'm onsite every day, checking on the hotel and stuff. It's no different than what you have at Kroger's. Probably not as bad as Kroger's or Walmart. I mean, you've got to watch what you're doing there or you end up being a squished bug in those locations and our density. And one of the nice things about that is you've got offsetting time periods where people come in and out, which I think makes well for this particular site. The market shows that the time periods most dense for the Dunkin' Donuts is going to be from 6:00 in the morning till about 9:00 o'clock. CVS, their more time parameters.
Why don't you sit down by the mic so people can hear you out there?
Sure. And if you look at what's the pattern of traffic for CVS, theirs is later in the afternoon, starting roughly 4:00 till about 7:00 or 8:00. They are separated away from Applebee's at that point then. And then your other density area is the hotel. But the hotel's biggest density area is on weekends, which is off-center of what the other traffic patterns are, because, you know, we're basically sold out on weekends with the hotel and then not as much during the week. So there's... I think as a mix, probably considering how all four of them are nationally-known franchises, chains and stuff, they all seem to work very well on when people are coming in and out of that then.
How about parking overflow from Applebee's? Because I noticed and while...
Applebee's and Holiday Inn have an agreement where they basically have cross-easement parking between the two.
Okay.
We will, of course, have to put up some signage for Verizon there because Verizon is going to have some people coming at dinnertime there, which will basically say Verizon parking only at that location. And so parking will have to occur in behind Applebee's where it's supposed to occur anyhow then on it.
This agreement between Applebee's and the Holiday Inn, is that in writing and something that's been recorded?
It is not. It's a handshake in that with it. It all meets the requirements of parking requirements. And it's been four years.
I have to share that I have the same concerns. We actually visit, you know, the restaurant. And almost every time I'm down there, you've got someone zipping through from CVS. There's no stoppage, or they're ignoring this stoppage in terms of coming across these openings. And I just...
I get it from the other way. From, you know, if I'm in CVS, I have to watch out for the people who are zooming through from Applebee's.
I don't think... Well, I think we have a stop written on the pavement. I don't think there's a stop sign that's going across.
But people don't stop.
People don't stop.
Well, they don't stop at the malls or anyplace else either.
Well, I mean, I have to say, I view this completely different than a Walmart or even Kroger's that has now its little gas station. That's pretty much one destination, large parking area. And here, we have many different destinations occurring with kind of a free-for-all parking. And I have also seen the overflow from the Applebee's restaurant in terms of parking. You're parking all the way down to the Holiday Inn.
Yeah, well, that's what it's set up for. Our speed bumps.
And then you're adding... It'd be one thing if you were just adding a business stop destination, but you have a CVS drive-through and now you're going to have a Dunkin' Donuts drive-through too. So there's just...
Right. That's also going to be counterflow. I mean, that's...
Right.
The area that you still have?
Oh, yeah, there's... There'll be a...
But maybe because of the magnitude of this, maybe we could consider a site visit. We go out, kind of look, stand around, look at flow, look at what the... Whether or not signage is working, or if we need actual stop signs.
Well, I think, like what Paul mentioned, of the speed bumps put at that intersection, which would go cross over to CVS, which forces people to slow down and see the stop sign at that point then. And I think that's probably a very valid suggestion.
Do we... Internal to the site, it's all private property. So as a city, as a planning commission, et cetera, do we have authority on this question? I'm just, I don't know. Do we have the authority to require stop signs?
What do you, from the ingress, ingress on East State Street into the property itself?
Right. And we've addressed... Some of those have been... We've talked about no right-turn signs, no left-turn signs at certain areas. We addressed some of that on Monday. I'm just wondering, like, internal, if there's issues with people speeding through the parking lots and cutting through, you know, a couple of speed humps here and there and there to address most of those issues.
It'd be interesting to see if there's been any traffic reports put on damaged vehicles, because it's been in operation for three years.
I would say probably not within here, absolutely out on East State Street. A week doesn't go by that we don't get a fender bender back up between people trying to go 50 West and, you know, all out in front of the area. But you'll find something on private property.
That was the whole reason we went to the right-in, right-out only. Went with the Ballard's across the street and ended up having the only way into the site from traveling west from east to west was at the traffic light. And so that has, I thought, been very well controlled.
What else? Anything else? Harry?
No.
RJ?
No.
Anything else to add? What do we need? What do we need to do here? What do we have left?
Most of the issues relating to Public Works and Engineering, whatever that department's called today, Engineering and Public Works. Most of the issues had to do with the site plans that were provided and that were distributed two weeks ago. A lot of the water lines and storm lines, et cetera, were not accurate. Mr. Knoll said most of those issues, they did have engineering documents to verify where the water lines were. And I don't know if you've gotten that to Andy yet, but we will be getting that to him.
Yeah.
Then there is... So that will be coming and we should, I assume, at the next Planning Commission meeting, we'll have that prepared.
Those should be in your offices.
Tomorrow, Friday.
Tomorrow, Friday. Okay. So basically, what it was is we took original architectural drawings way back when and didn't realize that the two of the lines that was on the original, which was a preliminary design, didn't reflect the final design by the engineering company, civil engineering. And so we had to go back and update those so they were probably corrected then, what was actually finally put in.
Okay, so we still need a review from Engineering and Public Works on that?
We'll need a second review. What is... This is Andy's review based upon the site plan that was provided two weeks ago.
Okay.
And these issues are... A lot of them will be resolved by providing that documentation. Once Andy has that, we'll go through another review of it and see what else needs to be done. There were a few questions about easements. I think specifically a large one was a storm sewer line easement. Or was that a...
Sanitary.
Was it a sanitary line that runs through the property out by...
Front of Holiday Inn.
Best we can find was a letter from the Sewer Department saying that they would accept the line once it passed this PTI. We found documentation. Of course, you couldn't open up the sewer line by EPA unless you had an approved PTI. But we're trying to get from the civil engineer a copy of those tests and the contractor to make sure we have that four-year records with that when we resubmit so they can be stored wherever the other ones were originally, because they had to be there when we originally made the taps. But so we're tracking that down. Could not find, and I'm still looking, for documentation of an easement for the water and sewer line which runs through the Loop Road on that. Have a letter saying the city would take it, but no actual legal document says easement is here, therefore this is dedicated as easement then. So we may have to come up with some documents to make that happen then.
And then you still need a review from the other departments. I haven't heard code, police, fire.
We just haven't provided the final staff memo because we knew that this wasn't prepared yet through the... Chief Troxway and Chief Mayor have both reviewed it. Very minimal concerns from both of them. Chief Mayor's had some questions about lighting, perimeter lighting in the parking lots, et cetera. Mike can provide most of that and he explained, he showed me on Monday where there would be additional lighting that wasn't reflected on the site plan. I don't think there'll be any outstanding issues with that.
Pretty much, most of lighting is around the building. We have the major pole lights which exist on the road. And then there's a pole light in front of CVS that they need to replace the bulb for and which will provide more than enough parking for the parking lot areas. And then on the sidewalk areas and directly behind this building, each will be lights that are beyond those for lighting those areas too, so.
And then Fire had a few... Chief Troxway had some standard comments and requests relating to the location of lock boxes, et cetera, and that will be arranged between the developers and the police or the Fire Chief.
Okay.
One question we did have internally that was discussed was relating to Holiday Inn provided... There being... The Holiday Inn site having an easement connecting it to East State Street so that it could have an East State Street address. And if it didn't have that, it would have to be changed over to an East Park address. Mr. Knoll said that currently it actually does have an East Park address. And so there's no need for that easement.
And in fact, at the same address as some place out in Wonder Hills.
Oh, dear. There's an East Park out there? Is that what you're timing?
I... It was great during construction to have a semi driving through Wonder Hills looking for 11 to Park Drive. So we finally quit giving them the address then. And even now, most people come in, they'll come in the main road there, which is next to Applebee's then.
With the addition of this building, would formalization of the easement between Applebee's, Holiday Inn Express, as far as the parking spaces, front and back be something?
I believe under Applebee's, under the purchase agreement with Applebee's, they requested that because they weren't going to, even though the parking meets the standards for numbered seats, they were aware that on the busy weekends during the holidays and stuff, that they would have some overflow into the Holiday Inn parking lot. And that is in a, I believe, in the purchase agreement between Peanah Land Development and Applebee's with that. So it is in writing and has been registered at a courthouse, but I'll get you a copy of that.
And are these plans, I say hot off the press, these were the ones you're submitting today, or you're going to need to change a few more?
We were... No, we will resubmit a whole new set. We had shown the planning office what we thought might occur with the revisions of the parking to get their input, because they originally suggested maybe going to a 90-degree parking on that drive and we wanted them to give us their input on it instead of the 45-degree.
Okay, I see.
Did the State Tree Commission then grant approval?
State Tree Commission and I and Mr. Knoll can work out exactly. They did not... They had to write a number of trees, but they didn't have the proper size that they needed. So they've changed some of them. Mr. Thomas is going to give me a drawing as to what they're going to change and so on and so forth. And then they have other trees behind the hotel.
The celebration park that was put in.
Where they could maybe put some there.
Yeah, originally, the Tree Commission asked for 15 trees. We planted over 24 trees in that area when we did that particular project. So with the knowledge that when this fourth piece finally developed, that they probably wanted a couple more trees.
So it wasn't a formal approval, but it's one that they said that we can work out in interim with them before their next meeting.
Other questions, other comments?
Could... If things were pretty busy on East State Street, can a customer for Dunkin' Donuts go down Park Drive and basically cut through the painted triangle that you have?
No. That wouldn't be possible because, you know, they can't turn a car that much. So there, you're going to take a right across CBS, which is allowable. Or they can take a left and then go between Verizon and Applebee's and then in front of the hotel with it then. And that would not be a practical thing for anyone leaving Dunkin' Donuts to do then. Now granted, if there were, you know, six cars backed up for Dunkin' Donuts, they would, of course, which was no different it was originally at the bank, could cut across the painted surface area there and say, hey, I don't have time to wait for this line to break. And so they have an escape room. Yes, they do have that. At the time, there'd be, you know, a big line if there would be one then. So, because that is open. And that's actually probably the people who park behind Verizon, staff and stuff, they would leave that way also then with it.
Other questions? Harry, anything?
No.
Paul?
RJ?
No.
Okay, so it sounds like we're still waiting for information. Do you want to try scheduling a site review next week or two weeks from now before the Planning Commission meeting, or do you want to just go out there and check it out?
Only if the commissioners or we can all go on our own and just observe. You can't make a decision anyway if we were to, you know...
I would suggest go out there on your own, pick a time that you think is going to be most problematical and go from there. I mean, then we could all just come back and discuss what we see and what we like and don't like. Does that make sense?
Want to kind of split it up the time of day, maybe?
Well, we could try, but I don't think we need to do that. But we'll take a time and then we'll sit there and converse and figure out which time we found.
Report back on the time, include the time in our report and say...
I think so, yes. Okay, so we're holding off for more information and updated plan. I think RJ was asking a little bit about the stormwater runoff. It looks like you have some of that in the plan. I think that was part of the questions that the Public Works and Engineering was asking as well. Is that correct? Looking at that sheet.
Yeah, they were under assumption that the water all flowed to East Park Drive.
Okay.
Which is what our drawings unfortunately showed, that was the wrong set of drawings. And actually, the system splits CBS water in the east parking lot on Holiday Inn. They go to East Park Drive. Everything west of Verizon, parking lot of Verizon, the west parking lot of Holiday Inn, and all of Applebee's, all drains into the new storm lines that we put in that then go to the small retention swale that exists between that and the ball field, or the dog park.
Fifty.
Then. So it's probably it's 60/40 on quantity of water. And I have not seen, and I've been there quite a few times with the big storms, I haven't seen any effects at all on storm or manholes popping or anything like that with what has been done. It's been there for four years and it had some major storms probably over the last four years that would have indicated if we had an issue then.
Okay.
I think what the city did beyond the dog park, when they cleaned up some of that area there next to the tower, probably has helped, greatly helped with the water coming from east side at that location. Although it's... I think it's an example of what a lot of people are asking for now with sustainability of controlling stormwater, putting it into swales, naturally leasing that. That whole swale area in behind the ballpark is exactly what we should be doing with all our parking lots.
It's a rain garden that we didn't really plan for. Is that what you're telling me?
What's that?
It's a rain garden that we didn't plan for.
Yeah, it's a rain... Yeah, exactly. And it's developing as a small marsh area, small wetlands with it. So, you know, sometimes nature does what it wants to do and it does it better than we could ever plan to do.
As long as we don't end up with too many Canadian geese in there, I guess, we're okay to go. Okay, so anything else on this case? Okay, so we revisit this when we get some more of the updated plans, some feedback from the various departments on the updated plans and go through.
Did you say you were going to meet as a quorum on the site or not?
We're not.
No. I think it's probably easier just for us to go out there rather than try scheduling something.
I'm assuming you might be anticipating coming back on December 2nd?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so that's it then? Anything else? Any more comments on this case? Okay. Let's go on to communications. Thanks. Communications. Does anybody have any communications? I don't have any. No? Harry?
No.
Okay. Last minute stuff. Reports from the planner and the director of development and code enforcement, which one's go first?
About a month ago, the Planning Commission requested I had talked about historic preservation issues and it requested that I give some sort of a basic flow of how this would happen. And so that first page is a quick summary of the process of what we've indeed do as a city to establish a historic district. Our comprehensive plan recommends that the city apply and become what's called a certified local government, and that's actually the fourth step there. So the first three steps are the things we would have to do in order to apply to become a certified local government. The first step we've already done, we have established, I believe, three historic districts or two historic districts. The Near East Side Neighborhood Association is in the process. I believe they just submitted their application to the National Register for a historic residential district for some of the... They've identified a lot of homes in that neighborhood that could be...
of the, they've identified a lot of homes in that neighborhood that, that could potentially be registered as part of a neighborhood district. So they did that actually this week. Then the second step would be to adopt a preservation ordinance. I have attached to this, two different attachments. The first one is actually an ordinance that a task force of the City of Athens created, a, an ordinance that they recommended to City Council back in 1996. As you can see, it's already has written in there, the City of Athens, et cetera. So this isn't a new, we're not talking about anything new here. We're talking kind of about Athens history with just getting through this process. And then the second attachment, I don't recall if I provided that a month ago, but it is the Ohio Historic Preservation Office's model ordinance as well. So I haven't checked to see if what the state recommends for their model ordinance still jives with what was done back in 1996 at the city. But I imagine that they're pretty similar.
Okay.
And that, of course, you know, an ordinance would be adopted by City Council. I think the, probably we should, we can build upon what was done in 1996 and maybe have it reviewed by a committee or something like that, or by the Planning Commission. And then we can try to work with City Council to adopt an ordinance that makes sense and for the City of Athens.
Okay. In terms of an ordinance, this as a, an area, this would be equivalent of an overlay or zoning district, or does it fall out of that entirely?
I, I think an overlay is a good definition of it. The requirements of the ordinance would only apply to established historic districts or landmarks that are registered. And so an overlay is a good way to look at it. This, we do have an overlay or a, a district that's been established for the Uptown District back in 1980. There's a campus government district that encompasses parts of college, or most of College Green and Terrace and, is it Park or President's Street?
Park.
Where Baker Center is and the President's, President's House, et cetera.
Okay.
So that is, that is covered in a district already. The university has done a pretty good job of keeping things and any development in that district in harmony with what exists today. And then if we have one in the Near East Side, that may be a third district coming our way, so.
Okay.
And then it'd be up to the city to establish which districts, what type of requirements, if any, would we wanna have for them. The ordinance would establish, part of the ordinance would create a historic preservation review board. And that's really where the details of the devil and the details would come out. But the review board would be responsible to permit demolitions, construction, preservation, restoration, the rehab, potentially the rehab of homes and commercial buildings, and new construction within those specific districts. They would designate for, they would look at the appropriateness of demolitions, constructions, et cetera, in relation to the historic character of the district.
Okay. I realize, looking at this board, Historic Preservation Review Board, it includes one member appointed by the Board of Housing Appeals. I am cognizant of the fact that the Housing Board, Board of Housing Appeals has not met in many years.
Right.
As far as I know, there's no current members to this.
I don't believe so either.
I don't think there's been a case for the appeals in many, several years, if not many years. Are you aware of any, John, or?
No, no. But I brought it up a while back. I know somebody was talking about wanting to, but it never, never came to it.
If my memory's correct, the reason why the, it's changed quite a bit is a lot of the housing, this had to do with rental housing for the most part and conforming to Title 29, if my memory's correct.
Correct.
And therefore, what at that time is that most people actually do the structural alterations to conform rather than appeal for, for most of rental market. If we have this and put this in place, we may wanna modify that or actually get a Board of Housing Appeals in place.
Oh, shit.
Okay. I could see that. That, that means we're trying to generate two boards, one that will probably never meet and one that hopefully will meet enough to make a difference in terms of historic preservation.
Or you could just remove that.
Well, okay. That's something to think about. Who, the next thing you look at is who would you want to put in there? A zoning board of appeal?
I thought, personally, I, I thought a board of seven seemed large.
Okay.
That was my impression, though, not that, I know that the state recommends a board of at least five, up to seven, potentially nine if you're dealing with a, you know, Cleveland or a, a large city. But seven, just in my mind, seemed like, geez, that's a lot of people, but.
We might have.
Maybe seven is good.
For less and some alternates, maybe?
Mm-hmm. Maybe that's a way to do it, yeah.
I know with the zoning board appeals, in many cases, you have, you know, a need for those alternates. Okay, let's think about that. But that's something that just jumps out at me right there. Okay. Any other, any questions? Any more discussion on this? Comments?
Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
In terms of communication, I'm aware that there's been discussion at the Comprehensive Plan Review Advisory Commission about filling some membership on that. Do you wanna speak on that at all?
I have not sent out any requests for that.
Okay.
Yet. But we do need to fill two spots on that commission. One spot must be somebody from the business organizations of Athens, whether it be a business owner, manager, or somebody from the Chamber or the Uptown Business Association, something like that. The second member, I believe, must be somebody, just an at-large elector of the City of Athens. So any city resident would be eligible for that. What I was going to do, and I discussed that with you, of course, Mr. Mayor, but would send out an email to all of the attendees from the town hall meetings expressing that we need a few bodies to fill in. And if anybody's interested, to please shoot me an email and we can look at qualifications and talk about what the committee does and whether they're interested in proceeding or helping out.
Okay. Really, that's why I brought it up, just to bring it up to television there. Okay.
It's a good idea. One other thing I had was, as most of you may be aware, but the, we're still working on the plan for the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. We did have a public meeting last Thursday. I was attended by about 50 people. I thought it went really well. The first meeting was in September and that was heavily dominated by students. We did have it in this room, actually. And so we had a lot of input from the off-campus and university, from that generation or demographic, I suppose, age cohort. This meeting, we had it out at the community center and we had more of a higher, older age cohort, which was really useful to get input from those different, to talk about those dynamics a little bit more. And I, and I think from this point, we should have a plan, at least in a pretty firm draft stage by the end of January. And then it will be presented to council. So I think the planning process for that has gone really well so far.
I liked what I saw. I attended it. I, I found some of the ideas intriguing in terms of some of the tools that he talked about in terms of traffic, pedestrian tools, everything from, you know, the flashing lights to islands, putting islands in certain places for, for people crosswalk-wise, even bike cages and lockers was discussed. Of course, the implementation's always gonna be, you know, there were, it was broken down to long, short-term and immediate fixes. Of course, it all come down to whether we have the funds and we can do it, but it's a start.
Absolutely.
I thought it was, it was a good mix.
I think it complements our safe routes to school, safe travel plan very well, too. So I, I feel we're moving in a very positive direction with that component of planning in the City of Athens.
And I know they've put most of the information online. The preliminary report, I think, was online as a PDF file. I know that is good as well. It has a series of maps and some of the things that needed to be addressed.
Right. And that website will be updated regularly. You can find links to it from the City of Athens website.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Any questions for the planner?
No.
Okay. John?
I have nothing today.
Oh, that makes it easy.
That does.
Okay. Any questions for the director?
No.
No? Okay. Okay. Announcement and other businesses, business. Any announcements that need be done? The only one I have, I see here is the next meeting is December 2nd, two weeks from now, 12 o'clock. In between then, we'll probably take a tour out to Applebee's and CVS and see what kind of traffic flow we see there. Hopefully, no fender benders involved. Again, maybe we wanna look at the plans that we have right now, see, knowing that they'll be modified and try visualizing what we're looking at there. Just think, donuts and phones and things like that. Well, you know. Again, it's always interesting how to visualize these things. If you, if you look, you realize the, the laundromat on North Lancaster is slowly being built.
Right.
And it's, it is, it's an interesting thing to look at. It's how we visualize what we have and what's actually coming online there. Let's see. The next thing after that is disposition of minutes. Has anybody got a chance to look at the minutes?
Yeah.
Any corrections?
I have them this time, so I moved the approved minutes.
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Minutes are approved. Do I have a motion to adjourn then?
Make a motion.
Okay.
Paul, second.
Great. We are adjourned. Thank you.